Welcome to regular session, Mayor and City Council. Meeting six P M Tuesday, July sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pleasure of the. As Montier would do as the honor.
A pledge to the liberty of the world of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united up, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've got two call for questions. Excuse me, call to the public, Mr. Luis A. Parra. Would you please come forward and state your name and address, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Luis Parra, live in Nogales, Arizona. Councilman Bo Mias Lopez never had the pleasure. Good evening. Mr. Tao, Councilman Lisa, Vice Mayor, how are you? George, Roy, buenas tardes. Good afternoon. I'm here regarding the twenty-sixth of June meeting. Please don't misconstrue this as rhetoric. This is independent of the compensation study, and I know you have a lot of homework ahead of you and the budget. This is addressing an introduction of the ideology of equity into this administration. The city council's lack of wisdom regarding the employees' pay raises troubling. First and foremost, you are confusing a surplus with a profit. When a municipality collects more taxes than it spends, you have a budget surplus. In this case, if this surplus suffices for a five percent raise for all municipal employees, contracted or otherwise, so be it. This is a surplus, and I'm glad it passed. If the city of Nogales had invented a new concrete as a unit and sold it or licensed it, then you have an execution of sale. Money is exchanged for goods and services, hence you have generated a profit. Then and only then would it be appropriate to divide up the profit equally. This is the difference between a surplus and a profit. Some in the council are confusing perception with perspective. Your perception is equity. The true perspective is division, animosity, polarization. In the end, it's a means to control the city's employees. Your perception is that the municipal employees are in need of a surrogate government official to decide what's best for them financially. The true perspective, you are counting their money. You were not elected to count their money. You were elected to make sure their paychecks don't bounce, not to count their money. The bottom line is you are taking food off one table in the name of an ideology to put more food on someone else's table at your discretion. That's not cool. There are no victims working for the city of Nogales. From the lowest-paid employee to the highest-paid employee, each and every one of them was grateful to be chosen for that job. Why? Number one, because they needed employment. And moreover, there were that there were there were many others waiting to be chosen to fill that vacancy. Under your perception, equity, Councilwoman Lisa, if you were retired, were not retired, and you and I were employees and were subject to the ideology that you're in favor of, in your opinion, how much of your paycheck would be for me?
Go ahead. This call to the public, they can't address or can't respond.
Okay, another example. Councilwoman Lisa, again, under the subject of your ideology that you're in favor for, if you made twenty dollars and you were obligated and forced to pay three others, me and two others, five dollars, what would motivate you to make another twenty? Powerful advocates and interests are in favor of confiscating wealth in the name of this ideology and redistributing it evenly in order to create value for everyone. The government was not created to solve your problems, even though this federal administration says it would. Slowly but deliberately, this federal administration is converting a capitalist economy and a capitalist society into a welfare state. It takes eleven days to count to one million. It takes thirty-two years to count to one billion. The government was created to keep its people and its society safe and maintain order. Success is not a matter of opinion. Success is a matter of discipline, hard work, effort, experience, preparedness, resilience, and above all, above all, meritocracy. Everyone earns the fruits of their labors and therefore should be compensated accordingly. Furthermore, optics do matter. If the upper chain of command needs a lot of vehicles, so be it. Can you can you lease a vehicle? This would address both issues, affordability and the petition of need. Miss Councilwoman Lisa, it may seem that my comments are directed to you as an individual. They are not. However, quite frankly, and with all due respect to Mayor Maldonado and the rest of the council and my observant of the blatant nepotism at hand, you seem to be the one that's driving the bus. I also enjoy reading this, Lisa. I don't consider myself a voracious reader, but I do read with intent. Here are some examples of this ideology you're in favor of. During the Obama administration, after legalizing propaganda, President Obama all but declared war on the suburbs with this ideology in mind. It seems he wanted to abolish it. This is an eye-opening read, to say the least. Here's another example of this ideology. Thankfully, thankfully, President Biden's administration was unsuccessful in federalizing the state and municipal planning and zoning rules, all in the favor of this ideology. In the end, it's a means to control society. This ideology seems to discourage, not punish, success. In early twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, the Biden administration passed a law targeting new, excuse me, new homeowners with prime credit. So you do your best to get the prime credit, save your money, cross your Ts and dot your Is, and you have prime credit. In early twenty twenty-three, the Biden administration passed a law targeting new homeowners with prime credit. They will be ordered to pay a monthly fee for the life of their mortgage pursuant to the amount financed, all in the name of equity. This monthly fee will be used to subsidize others who have subpar credit. Equal opportunity equals fairness. Equal outcome equals communism. Equal people are not free. Without competition, you have no performance. Without no performance, you have no success. Wouldn't it be wise to stick to what's been working for the past two hundred and forty-eight years? Hard work, competition, and meritocracy? I sure hope so. In closing, have I voluntary walked into the gauntlet? I sincerely hope not. I hope not. My addressing the council was not to provoke any kind of retaliation or retribution on any level from anyone here or within the general public. That's not what it's about. Today's think tank ideology is equity, and many agree with it. I understand. It looks good on paper, but what about tomorrow? What about tomorrow when another think tank dissects another social norm and they create a brand-new think tank ideology? And it comes down to pie, and you don't agree with it? And the government implements it accordingly? And it's detrimental to you and your being. Then what? Well, this is progress according to the present federal government's perspective, when it really is social subversion. Finally, I must sadly, sadly address what what will inevitably come my way: racism. Racism is no longer based on religion, creed, or color. Today, racism, thanks to the left's radical agendas and polarizing demands, racism is now based on your political orientation. Anyone who disagrees or challenges with the liberal left's progressive ideology or agendas such as equity is branded a racist. I am not a racist. I just don't agree with this ideology. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next call to public, we have Ms. Leslie Kantoits.
Thank you, Mayor Maldonado and the members of the council. My name is Leslie Kantoits. I am from Tucson, Arizona. I am the executive director of the Santa Cruz Valley National Heritage Area, and I am joined by Mary Dahl, our board president. We very much appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight and also want to thank you for the support that you have shown the Santa Cruz Valley National Heritage Area leading up to our designation and subsequent to our designation of the U.S. Congress in two thousand nineteen. One of our very first activities after designation was the installation of the mural here in Nogales on the former bank building at one twelve North Grand Avenue. As you might know, Santa Cruz Valley National Heritage Area is one of sixty-two national heritage areas in the U.S. and one of two in Arizona, the other being Yuma Crossing National Heritage Area along the Colorado River in Yuma. NHAs are recognized for the significant contributions that an area has made to the development of the American story and for its sustaining resources that further that development. Our cooperative work agreement with the Department of the Interior is managed through the National Park Service. As the local coordinating entity, our mission is to connect people to the historic and cultural foundations and the living landscape of the Santa Cruz Valley and to actively work toward its stewardship. So it's about connection and it's about stewardship, and it's through these various means of connection that people are made aware and begin to care about something. And when you care about something, that's when stewardship starts to take place. And this is why we're here today. It has to do with connection. May I hand out a packet? So earlier this month, Mary and I met with Mr. Tapia, and we expressed our desire to work with the city of Nogales and local organizations to install an interpretive wayside exhibit in Carum Park. The proposal we presented is is attached in this packet along with some other informative literature. The sign at Carum Park would be our third wayside installation. We plan to do at least eleven of them throughout the National Heritage Area, one for each of our themes. And this one, which would be interpreted in Spanish and English, would focus on the unique stories and experiences within the border region. I understand the city is working to develop your downtown into a destination point, and we believe this sign will contribute to that effort. The NHA will work with community stakeholders to develop the content and cover the costs for designing, manufacturing, and shipping the sign. We only respectfully request that the city give us permission to locate the sign at Carum Park and then cover the facility's labor for the installation of the sign. Once again, I thank you for your time and consideration and wish you a good evening.
Thank you. No more call to public, let me select it. Thank you. We move to number four presentation, presentation, current action with AC Department of Environmental Quality and the Federal Environmental Protection Act, NEPA, N E P A, process by Patagonia Area Resource Alliance, Ms. Carolyn Shaffer.
Good evening. We have to go back a little here. These were getting bumped along the way, which was just fine, a wave of introduction for you to kind of sneak a peek at what was coming up. I am Carolyn Shaffer, a twenty-eight-year resident of Santa Cruz County and mission coordinator with Patagonia Area Resource Alliance. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today on something of major importance to all of us. I come to this work with significant business management experience, including thirty years in law firm management and twelve years as the co-owner of a union power line construction company. One chapter in my life story is that I held mining claims in the Patagonia Mountains. I was what the eighteen seventy-two mining law was designed for, someone using small hand tools with minimal disturbance to public lands. We are in uncharted territory. There is a proposed mine operation in the Patagonia Mountains that will have significant impacts on all of Santa Cruz County. Now that the mine plan of operations is public information, we are identifying the concerns of a twenty-first century industrialized mining operating in a global biodiversity hotspot. We are the only location in the entire United States with a mining project that has been admitted to the FAST forty-one program. And FAST doesn't mean the speed with which they're moving it, I hope. It stands for fixing America's surface transportation and was signed by President Obama all that time ago. But again, this is now the only mining project that is on this particular program. Our environmental protections are being weakened continuously, and the more we learn, the more our concerns grow. These are pottery shards found in the Patagonia Mountain area, which I found myself because I was having an earlier conversation with a someone who grew up in Patagonia in this room, who has fond memories of finding pottery shards everywhere. We are documented, and I don't mean just Patagonia, Santa Cruz County, as being inhabited by native peoples for more than ten thousand years. And that's because we live in a unique area for many reasons, including that everything that we need to support all kinds of life forms exist here, and that is what we want to protect. The Patagonia Mountains and Sonoyta Creek watershed are identified by scientists as one of the top regions in the world most in need of research and protection for species survival. We have a wonderful seventeen-minute video about the biodiversity of this area. It's available on YouTube, Biodiversity in the Heart of the Sky Islands, and you can also go to our website and click on it there. This is a picture of the Sonoyta Creek watershed. I love this. Look at all those beautiful blue lines. As we're all doing our different rain dances right now, we have a true appreciation for the water that comes into our life. The Sonoyta Creek watershed has six unique biological zones that all come together in this area. That's why our biodiversity is so great. And I won't read all these numbers to you. I have asked Letitia, if you haven't already received a PDF of this presentation, to have it. One of the things that stands out for me on this slide, though, is our area has over six hundred species of native bees. I never knew there were that many bees to begin with, let alone all of them right there in Patagonia. We have more than one hundred federally threatened, endangered, and sensitive species. The biological wealth of that region supports our economy. PARA is the acronym for Patagonia Area Resource Alliance, and our mission is to hold federal and state agencies to the existing regulations relative to mining. We also collaborate with many strategic partners to ensure that mining activities meet science-based standards and that we are protecting the water and the land and the wildlife of the Patagonia Mountains. We also support the expansion of the nature-based restorative economy that exists in our region, and I will say more about that in a second. These are all the different partners that we currently work with, and these are national partners such as Center for Biological Diversity, Earth Justice, Earth Works, et cetera, statewide organizations, Skyland Alliance, and Save the Scenic Santa Rita's and others. Locally in Patagonia, because of the many amenities that are in Patagonia, we have a lot of national organizations there, too. The Nature Conservancy, Tucson Audubon, Borderlands Restoration Network, Friends of Sonoyta Creek, and others. Back in twenty fifteen, those local organizations came together and created the town's flood and flow committee to begin to talk about water issues. And recognizing that there were these mining proposals and activity, we began to create baseline information about water quality and quantity as well as biodiversity information. That's important to share because it can feel sometimes overwhelming with the unknowns of what is going to happen. But we are a community, and I don't mean Patagonia, I mean as a county. We are a community of people who are proactively engaged in co-creating a better world. What about jobs in economy? Well, I mentioned the nature-based restorative economy, and these are some incredible numbers for that. This is an economy that we want to grow because this is an economy that will serve us, our children, our grandchildren, and seven generations beyond that. That's what we want to work to protect. Again, you will have these PDFs forwarded, and you can read the little lines there, but on the left is a map of all the mining claims in the Patagonia Mountains. There is about seventy-five thousand acres of claims. They're about evenly split between two companies. There is a exploratory company and a mining company. In today's world, those are the two kinds of companies that you have. Exploratory companies don't ever do the mining, and mining companies don't do the exploration. The exploratory companies come out, they confirm the minerals are there and estimate how much, and then they sell it off to a larger mining company. So half of the land that's about there right now, the public lands, are all mine claims by a Canadian exploratory company. Then the other half is lands that are in control of Australian mining company, South Thirty-two. They have approximately six hundred acres of private patented lands, and then the rest is on public lands, claims. Now, the unique thing about it being private patented land, that was an oddity of the eighteen seventy-two mining law. You could file a claim and say to the government, I'd like to own this, and the government would sell it to you for five dollars an acre. That is still a part of the eighteen seventy-two mining law, but don't rush out and get some five-dollar acres because it was put on hold back in nineteen ninety-four, so no new ones were issued so far. That becomes important because being on private patented lands allowed the mining company to not have to subject itself to any federal environmental regulations. All they needed were some state permits. With respect to groundwater, mining companies are exempt from all groundwater regulations in the state of Arizona, so they can have as much as they want and do with it what they will. The other two permits that they needed were an aquifer protection permit to protect the aquifer and the Arizona Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Who makes these things up? Discharge permit, and that's for surface water protection. PARA is involved in various legal actions with all of those, including the additional state one is the air quality permit. This second map is based on information from natureserve.org, and those pink areas in the middle are the largest biodiversity in the Patagonia Mountains, which the entire mountains are incredibly biodiverse. Right there, that pink area, unfortunately, is also an overlay of exactly where all the mining operations are currently proposed. And in case you also didn't know it about the eighteen seventy-two mining law, mining companies pay no royalties on the minerals removed. Oil and gas companies have to pay royalties. Mining, arboric mining does not. So yes, there was historical mining up there. In the early nineteen hundreds, a total of just over fourteen thousand tons of material was extracted per year. South Thirty-two alone, beginning in twenty twenty-seven, has forecast they intend to remove four-point-seven million tons of material per year. This is dramatically different from historical mining in terms of volume, but in a time of long drought and not a good picture for future weather conditions. We refuse to be a sacrifice zone, and our communities in this county have all of the markers that make us an environmentally justice-challenged and social justice-challenged area. We are typically the areas that become sacrifice zones. Fortunately, this county has a lot of residents who do not want to see that happen. So I shared with Letitia to share with all of you updates on our current legal actions. I won't go into detail them here, but I will continue to share those. On our state litigation, this isn't just, oh, go away mining. This is state agency. You aren't doing what the law says. The law says you shall install a point of compliance on a vertical plane, i.e. a well. Instead, the state agency designated a conceptual point of compliance. Maybe someday we'll ask you to do it. And to add insult to injury, on the X marked on the spot was private property, and that landowner gave us an affidavit in our lawsuit and said, no, we won't allow a well on our property. So these just aren't willy-nilly, off-the-cuff lawsuits. These are to get these agencies to follow the regulations they're supposed to. The federal litigation we're currently involved in is for the Forest Service granting exploratory permits to that Canadian company and to South Thirty-two for a small exploratory project they wanted to do on public lands. Forest Service is supposed to do what is known as cumulative impacts. You're doing something here and here and here, so the total amount of impact from that determines how they look at the permits. The Forest Service did not do that. They only looked at each project individually, but the totality of all these projects together is immense and long-lived. So that's the core essence of what those particular litigations are about. The other major problem issue right now is the FAST forty-one National Environmental Protection Act scoping comments, which were due on June tenth. South Thirty-two chose in getting themselves admitted to the FAST forty-one program to submit themselves to federal regulations, and quite frankly, I'm grateful for that. So the first step, we're scoping comments. PARA coordinated sixteen different organizations with thirty-five people from those various organizations with expertise in biodiversity, air, water, public safety, public health, et cetera, and crafted comments, and we combined them into a one-hundred-and-eighteen-page document that was filed with the Forest Service. Interestingly, there were also three federal agencies that filed significant comments. It's not that it never happens, but it's a tad unusual to have all three of them file the level of comments that they did. That's because of the concerns about what's going on in this area. One of the agencies was the Environmental Protection Agency, whose comments addressed water and climate reality primarily. Another was Fish and Wildlife, which addressed biodiversity concerns. And the National Park Service also filed comments with respect to air quality because all of this operation will happen fairly close to the Swaharo National Park. City of Nogales is closer than Swaharo National Park, and if the National Park Service is worried about air quality, and it's important for the city of Nogales to pay attention also. So it is good that there is discussion about drafting a protection and benefits agreement with South Thirty-two. This is a conversation that started at the South Thirty-two Advisory Panel, which has now been disbanded, and there was a working group of folks who, out of the fifteen on the panel, five of us were talking about what that agreement might look like. One recommendation we ended up making as we handed off that process to the signatory organizations. as we handed off that process to the signatory organizations, governmental entities, if you will. South 32, of course, would be one entity. Santa Cruz County, City of Nogales, and Town of Patagonia are all the potential signatories to such an agreement. The one thing that our working group on the panel had recommended was, refer to this, please, as a community protections and benefits agreement. This is a projected mine life of 70 years, and it will be many years after that, hundreds of years during the post-closure time where we will feel the impact. So it is important to get our protections and to get our benefits in place. PARA will continue to be in communications with the city of Nogales to keep you updated on what is going on, not only with the legal actions, but primarily for your benefit in drafting this protections and benefits agreement. We are continuing to look at the mine plan of operations, our concerns, and what we suggest as mitigation and protections so that in 100 years from now, we aren't a sacrifice zone, but that we have created the kind of community that we all want to live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Ms. Montiel?
I just want to thank you, Carolyn, for your presentation. I know you've been trying to reach out to me for a while to meet with you, but I appreciate you coming here and presenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carolyn. Next item, we go to item B, the Port Authority's update by Mr. Josh Rubin.
Good evening, Mayor Madonado and members of the council. My name is Joshua Rubin. I am the chairman of the Greater Nogales-Santa Cruz County Port Authority, as well as a member of this community. As requested, I'm here to provide a quarterly update on the activities and the ongoing efforts on behalf of the Nogales-Santa Cruz County Port Authority. I want to remind you that while I'm here to report before you, our monthly reports are emailed and are also available to anyone through our websites. I plan on hitting on some key highlights to keep my presentation brief. But no, again, on our monthly reports, they're very detailed as to everything that we've been doing. For this report, I'll be covering the first two quarters of the year, starting. One area of great concern for us is the public perception of our community. On January 18, the Arizona Daily Star interviewed several port authority leaders from three major border communities and published an extensive article on the current situation at the border and the need for additional CBP staffing and resources. Among those from Nogales that were included in the article were Jaime Chamberlain, then the chairman of the Port Authority, Honorable Jorge Madonado, mayor, Lance Jugmire of the Fresh Produce Association of Americas, and Pedro Velasco, Kino Border Initiative. Mayor Madonado was quoted in the article, quote, "In September, CBP began shifting some officers temporarily away from the ports of entry to help with processing large numbers of migrants' arrivals between ports, extending wait times for travelers." Crossing into Nogales, Arizona, said the city's mayor, Jorge Madonado. "But the need for more resources at the Nogales ports predates those staff assignments," Madonado said. "We've been asking for more CBP officers for the last 10 years," he said. "Our port of Mariposa has got 12 gates, and at most, they open eight. Deacon Cini has six gates, and at most of the time, only four open." In January, Governor Hobbs, along with Director Briarly of the Arizona Department of Agriculture and various members of the governor's advisory team visited Nogales. While in Nogales, the governor met with the leaderships of the Fresh Produce Association of Americas to discuss the Tomato Suspension Agreement and threats from Florida and Georgia on the possible termination of the Tomato Suspension Agreement. She visited Divine Produce to see an agricultural inspection process firsthand, and she toured Deacon Cini Port of Entry and met with members of the Port Authority. During the meeting, the governor heard from the board members on issues impacting the manufacturing sector, the need to shore up CBP staffing, the need to modernize the Deacon Cini Port of Entry, the need to fund the construction phase of the Ruby Road interchanges, competition with New Mexico, California, Texas for new investment and trade, and the need to fund the Nogales community development, among various other topics. In February, at the invitation of Arizona Congressman Juan Scimani, the Western Congressional Caucus visited Southern Arizona. As part of a multi-day visit, I joined Allison Moore of the Fresh Produce Association and Luis Ramirez, Port Authority advisor, in a panel discussion for 14 congressional members and close to 35 staff that were part of the delegation. We focused on the realities of the border and stayed out of the politicals, the politics associated with it. In particular, we discussed the impacts of closing Lukeville Port of Entry and the domino effect and the actions on all the other Arizona ports of entry. I am happy to recognize the announcement that the Board of Directors of South 32 approved a $2.1 billion investment to develop the Admosa Project in Santa Cruz County, as well as congratulate the city in South 32 selecting Nogales to house the IROC or Centro facility. This is the single largest investment ever made by a private entity in Southern Arizona. We know there's a lot of work to be done before production starts, and we remain committed to focusing on the issues that impact our transportation infrastructure, helping to meet workforce needs, and leveraging the investment to attract new housing development in our region. Also in February, Arizona Congressman Juan Scimani and Greg Stanton introduced the CBP Hire Act. This bill embraces many of the principles that the Port Authority has championed for many years, principles that will help custom and border protection improve their staffing conditions, help in recruitment and retention, and help ensure that they have the staffing they need. The Port Authority has participated in multiple briefings with congressional delegations, diplomatic delegations, and even attended a reception at the U.S. Ambassador's residence in Mexico City, a reception for the governor of Arizona and a delegation of 50 Phoenix and Tucson leaders. We have also been supporting efforts to ensure the viability of Nogales community development. This organization plays an important role in the community through the service that it provides and is an essential player for planning for the future of downtown Nogales. We remain committed to this effort and hope to see these things turn around for this organization. One item that I do want to highlight that we held a meeting with GSA to hear the progress made to date on the feasibility study to modernize the Deacon Cini Port of Entry. One of the main topics that came out of the meeting was the need for Nogales to look at ways to leverage the anticipated federal investment and what that could mean for our community. The Port Authority is looking to expand contracts with Luis Ramirez advisors to undertake a more detailed and strategic approach on inviting and integrating stakeholder input into the process. We greatly appreciate the technical assistance support from EPA to conduct the downtown revitalization study. In an effort to make sure the community participates in the process, we are undertaking a community outreach approach, which includes an online survey that any stakeholder can take. We will tabulate the responses and provide them to the EPA for their consideration and inclusion into the final study. Ultimately, it is the EPA conducting the study, but Nogales is ours, and we are the ones that live here. We are grateful to the city for including the link to their survey on their city's website, and many other organizations are pushing out the information as well. And we ask that anybody who is interested, please fill out the survey and let us know your opinions. More recently, the city of Nogales joined a broad coalition of border communities and private sector entities in the opposition of HRC 2060. The bill would impose several new requirements for cities, counties, and local law enforcement. A copy of the letter was signed, has been distributed, but let me read the introductory paragraph. "As communities with a front row seat to the issues impacting the border, we are the first to deal with consequences of ineffective and inefficient policies coming from Washington, D.C. But our border communities are also the gateway to over $35 billion in two-way trade, over 23 million visitors, and close to 10 million cars. We write today in opposition to Arizona House Concurrent Resolution 2060 that seeks to have city and county governments assume responsibilities that we believe should remain strictly a federal mandate. The bill was just adopted by the House, which means the issue now goes to the ballot for the voters to decide." I also want to inform the council that at the request of the city manager, the Port Authority is helping to gather information on what it will take to modernize the bridges that provide east-west connectivity for our community over the Washington Railroad tracks. Kim Lee Horn was kind enough to provide an initial cost estimate, a cost estimate that went from $11 million in 2015 to over $26 million today. I want to stress that the costs are only estimates and that the engineering and design will need to be done to get a final cost. But this update estimate gives us a number to work on going forward. I want to conclude by expressing our congratulations to the city of Nogales for the successful transfer of the IOI and the federal government. This was decades in the making, and along with the $38 million cure-in-place, create a more sustainable environment that will contribute to the growth of the community. Special thanks to our senators, Sinema, Kelly, and congressional and Congressman Grijalva and Scimani for taking the Nogales Wastewater Act through the goal line, a major win for all of us. And while this is a major achievement, there is still more work to be done, including the need to secure the approximately 8 million for the installation, maintenance, and the operation of the mesh that will stop the flow of the drug bundles in the IOI. There's a lot more activity that we can discuss, but I wanted to respect your time. Please note that, again, all the other more detailed information you can find on our websites, as well as any questions you may have, you are more than welcome to reach out to us directly. Again, thank you for your contribution, and I will be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josh. Anybody? Go ahead, Ms. Doyle.
I'm just curious, with the IOI, and drugs continue to be a problem then, coming through, with the IOI?
As of what I know, right now, we have not had any issues yet. But yes, it can continue to be an issue.
So who's monitoring that?
Or from the transferring of the IOI, it should be the federal government that is now IWBC that would be monitoring and watching that.
So are you getting any reports on that?
As of right now, we have not, sir.
Thank you.
I will check in, and if we do, I will make sure I pass them over.
Thank you.
Yeah, with the signing of the IOI, Ms. Doyle, over to IBWC, they got, I think it was $12-point-some million also to work on the bundle...
Chug screen.
You know, captain of through the IOI. So I know they're working on it. Thank you. Anybody else have a question? It's Josh. Thank you. And, you know, I see that obviously this year has been very different from last year where the benefits of the overweight has considered to be been very positive for the city. So I appreciate, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. And if anybody needs any other further information, please reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have a proclamation on drowning impact awareness month. "Whereas Arizona future prosperity depends upon the long-term health, safety, and well-being of the nearly 2 million children and teens in our state, and whereas drowning is a top cause of injury and death for children and teens in Arizona, affecting not only the victims, but also families, emergency personnel, and our society as a whole. And whereas child drownings are nearly 100% preventable, and whereas research-proven strategies can save lives, including constant and capable supervision, restrictions, access to waters, use of life jackets, swimming lessons for adults and children in the appropriate age, and rapid emergency response, including CPR, and whereas awareness of the problem is just the first step, evidence-based program to being these tragedies to families is the best way to save lives. And whereas during the month of August, Drowning Prevention Coalition of Arizona, in collaboration with state and local governments, community organizations, and private citizens, will be engaging communities throughout Arizona in a coordinated and comprehensive response. Now, therefore, I, Jorge Madonado, mayor of the city of Nogales, Arizona, do here proclaim August 2024 as Drowning Impact Awareness Month and urge all committees and citizens of Arizona to participate in efforts to reduce drowning risks, strengthen families, and protect children and teens." Okay, thank you. Ms. Leti? Next, we go to update on accomplishments of downtown revitalization project by Mr. Tapia.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and council members. I'm going to give you an update of the downtown redevelopment effort that we started a few months ago. The Morley Avenue string lines, as you know, have been done. So that's complete. Now, right now, we are in the process of working on the bathroom remodel. Also, the art design, the option, the structural design, and the test report, and the structural design. Also, I want to discuss the business attraction tool as part of the conversation, and also the Santa Cruz Valley National Heritage Area, as Leslie presented during the open to the public, the idea of some signage history of the area, Nogales, as well. And I want to also leave the budget and source of funding as well. And it's not in your hand, but I'm going to just give you an update of the zoning code update because it relates to the downtown that we're working on. We're doing a downtown overlay. So as part of this presentation, I'm going to give you an update about that as well. So as you know, we completed the street lines installation on Morley Avenue, and the total cost that we had on that installation was $1,600, over $1,600. Unisource, as you know, during my last update, Unisource donated four poles on the west side of the Morley Avenue, on the parking lot owned by the Nogales Community Development. Those are the locations of the donated poles that we connected the string lines that had come from on the borderline all the way to Court Street. Now, the bathroom remodel that we're working on, that's going to be behind the scenes. We have been doing the design of the remodel. But as you know, we have to go through the building permits. And the building permits also require the flat plain use permit because this location is in the flat zone. It's not in the flatway, but it is in the flat zone. So we have a limitation how much we can improve the bathroom according to the use permit. We have a limitation how much money we can spend on the remodel. Because if we go over that amount, I'm going to show you in a minute, then the bathrooms, believe it or not, it has to be elevated two more feet as it is right now, yes, as part of the requirement. So this is the existing bathroom. As you may know, we are going to be replacing all the water connections, the sewer, and then put everything new on that location. This is a new floor plan, the layout, moving some of the toilets on the men's bathroom and the women's bathroom as well, and make a little more coordinated. and the women's bathroom as well, and make a little more, more coordinated, and moving the electrical panel on the, on the west side of the, on the building. Just an example of things that we're working on, the ideas, this can be looking like on the, on the remodel. And we're gonna replace, as you know, the, all the fixtures, and we had a quote by Home Depot already, so we know, we have an idea how much it's gonna be, replacing all those, the equipment, and including the, including the tile, the, the walls, the electrical, everything. Home Depot gave us an estimation, so we, I wanna provide in a minute the cost, but as you can see in that picture, it's replacing everything inside. Also, as part of the bathroom remodel, we have a discussion before, with City Council and also with the Downtown Committee, that the, the ADA ramp for handicap access, it was, it was very far from Park Street all the way to the bathroom. So Mr. Guerra, city engineer, he helped us to design an idea how we can actually install a new ramp closer to the entrance of the bathrooms. So, Mr. Guerra, I still working the details, but no, we think we can get it done as part of the bathroom remodel, so, and hopefully, we can use city staff, at least for the most of it, but we can just hire someone to deal with the concrete for the ramp, but potentially, we can use city staff, and the intent is to save money because we have limited funding. Like I mentioned, the, the use, the building permit for the bathroom is still under review by the, by my staff, but we already went through the Santa Cruz County Flag Control, and they gave us the flag hazard information sheet. Every permit that we, it goes through our office, we have to get this flag hazard information sheet, and this sheet, they tell you if you're required to go through the flat plain use permit, yes or no. You can see there, it says yes, so in this case, in our case for the bathroom remodel, we have to apply for the flat plain use permit, but we did. So this is the special conditions as part of the flat plain use permit requirements. As you can see, on the, on the bottom paragraph, the, the county assesses calculated the value of the existing bathroom to a hundred and thirty-one thousand, four eighty-four. So that's the total amount, so we allow only to remodel the bathroom up to, to sixty, sixty-five thousand, but right now, based on the estimation from Home Depot plus some labor, I put in our budget fifty thousand, we're still below the, the Santa Cruz County requirement, because if we go over that amount, then we have to elevate the bathroom, so doesn't make any sense, but, but that's part of the requirement of the county. So this is a flat plain use permit issued by the county, and you can see it was stamped, so in the, in the flat plain use permit, that tell you the actual elevations, everything electrical, it has to go over that number, which is thirty-eight something there. So the city, again, Juan Guerra, is gonna create an elevation certificate to, to, to show the county that we're meeting the requirement. So that's gonna be a certificate that we have to go and survey the area, and then, and then calculate the elevation on the existing bathroom, and where we put installing the, the new electrical panel. That's part of the county, so I already got the flat plain use permit last week, actually, I got it, so that's done. Now, now we're turning to the gateway arc locations. As you know, we're working on the Morley Avenue and Court Street, that's the, the, the arc location that we, the other side on Park Street, that's a little more challenging, so potentially, that's gonna be our other phase in the future. It depends on the, the consecutive entry remodel, so we don't know the extent, so we're gonna hold that on that one. So, so we have to do first a survey of the intersection where we're gonna locate the, the actual column for the arc. So we, we found the, the existing location of the utilities, and one of the main things concerned that we have, as you know, they, we have the, the underground channel, water channel that goes by the sidewalk on the west side of Morley Avenue, so we, we're trying to be very careful where we can put the columns of the arc. So the survey allows us to, at least to know what's below the ground, below the, the Morley Avenue, so that's very important, so we, we, we got a survey done, so that's complete. So based on the survey, again, Mr. Guerra did a, a proposal layout to the potential improvements that we have to do on the, on the intersection on Court Street and Morley Avenue. As you can see on the, on the west side of Morley Avenue, and also in the east side, we're gonna do a pullout where we're gonna locate the columns of the arc. Those are the two locations that we're proposing, a little farther from the corner, because as you may know, we have some utilities on the corner there, so we don't, we don't wanna eliminate the view of the arc when people are driving or, or walking, we wanna have to a clean view of the arc when you come in. So based on that proposal, the locations, we had to hire a soil test engineer to, to bore two areas, on the west side of the street, and also on the east side. Those little dots that you see, black and white, they did, they bore over here, and also on the, by the parking lot. So by doing that, they are, were able to find the, the, the structure of the soils. That information was provided to Cory Engineering, Mr. Cory, Alex Cory, is working on the, on the structural design of the arc, but he needed to know first what kind of soil conditions there were on the location, so he can design the footings, and also the, the weight of the columns and the arc, so he's working on that. He has provided me a couple weeks ago, a little rough idea of his calculations based on the, on the design, so that's not complete yet, I'm expecting to be done soon, but I wanted to show you that he's working on. I know it's taking time, but I mean, we have to be careful of the soil conditions, the structural design, because we have a strong wings in Nogales, we need to ensure it's safe. Last update, I remember I gave you this, this selected wording of the arc, welcome to historic downtown Nogales, that was the, the wording that we're working on for the place on the arc. This is an idea, just a rough sketch of the, of the arc, we're still working on the details, but I mean, once Mr. Cory finished the struc-, the structural design, then we're gonna know a little more about the cost of the metal, the arc, the footings, and, and make a little more, a better detailed drawing of the, of the design. This is an example that I showed you before, but I wanted to keep it here, because you can see in the contrast of the background, of the metal, and the, and the, the color of the letters. We're looking at different ideas, but this one looks like, you can see it really clear, this is in California, one location there, but there was something, an idea that, that we gave Mr. Cory as an example of the design. So the first funding allocation that, that we have, as you know, was dedicated by City Council, and, and it was based, in my last presentation, as you may remember, what we're trying to do in downtown Nogales is actually already a goal and objective of the general plan, twenty twenty, on the, on the general plan vision twenty twenty, for example, on the central cultural planning area. So that goal number one was to promote downtown Nogales as a vibrant, energetic, cultural hub of activity that draws people of all ages to live, work, play, shop, dine, entertain. So on the sunning update that we're working on right now, we are gonna create a downtown overlay district to allow all these things to happen with mixed uses, allow commercial on the first floor, and also residential on the second or third floor, or fourth floors, to provide more housing, more housing in, in the area of downtown. So that's our goal, to continue pushing the, the vision of the general plan. And in the policy under goal number one, is to revitalize central cultural to function as the historic cultural heart of the city, and as a vibrant revenue generating international gateway. As you know, the revenue of downtown Nogales has been going down, but I think the potential that we have there is eventually is gonna go up like in the old days, when we have different products along Morley Avenue. So, so as you know, the, the area between East Street and Court Street has been having issues, a lot of vacant buildings that are going over there, so our intent is to actually help the property owners by helping to find new commercial businesses to locate in this area. We know we have the space, but we need to help them to find the appropriate business based on demographics that come into the downtown area. So on that issue that we had there, we have looked into options to create opportunities. So we got, we getting a, an application that allow you to, to do that, to help you find businesses based on the customer base that they shop and work in Nogales, and what kind of businesses they're looking for. So if we find that those, those customers are coming to Nogales, but they don't find what they need, they go to Saguarita, or Rio Rico, or Tucson. So how can we capture that, those customers? So this application is helping us to actually entertain those businesses and tell them, here, you, we have the customer base, can you come into downtown Nogales, or even in other places in Nogales, but the focus first is gonna be downtown Nogales. So this application is gonna help us primarily, first, we're gonna focus on retail analysis and recruitment, and, and support local businesses. But this software allows us to do all of that, even in parks and recreation, how many people are coming to, to special events, they're coming to baseball games, where they're coming from. So by knowing that, we can actually do things for those customer base, so this application is gonna help us to do that. For example, on the, on the last twelve months, the, the software gave us an example how, how we can find the, the customer base, and how many people are actually coming into, which we have a lot. It's, it's really incredible that we have a lot of customers, but some of them, they go to Tucson, or they go to other places, but we get those businesses, are they looking for, then we can, we can, we can get them here. There's a lot of people that are coming through the border, and also that live here, and they come from Rio Rico, Patagonia, and other places. So that's really critical to capture that, that market. Now, like Leslie mentioned earlier, downtown, downtown areas and all over, all over the country, we have ideas of signs, how to provide the information about the history of the place. Like Leslie mentioned earlier, we had the opportunity to, to show visitors in the downtown Nogales to have something like this in, in an area by the park. And not only this one, but we're gonna provide more signs later to inform the visitors in downtown what to do in Nogales. And this is an example how it can be done to educate and, and tell people when they come into Nogales that this area is amazing. So as Leslie mentioned again, I am showing the screens, this was placed in Patagonia, I believe, that's what they did over there, so the intent is to have something like this, but will be a bilingual, English, Spanish, to tell people what is available and, and where they can go to visit some very amazing places. Now, so far, the actual and estimated cost that we have, as I mentioned, the streetlights total was a little over sixteen hundred dollars. The, the bathroom remodel, based on Home Depot, Home Depot estimation that they gave us already, we estimated about fifty thousand, so it's be, below the, the flat plain use permit requirement. The, the land utility survey, fourteen fifty, the topography survey, four hundred dollars, we're using, we're trying to save money in these areas. The soil test report was forty-nine hundred, it was already done, and the gateway arc is structural engineering design, we, I'm estimating twenty-five hundred dollars for Mr. Cory, told me that he doesn't wanna charge, he wants to volunteer his work, but I put twenty-five hundred dollars there, just in case he needs something, but he told me that he, because he grew up in Nogales, he has property in Nogales, he wants to donate his time for, for that, for this project. The, the art design, which is pending, what the, once he finished the design of the, the metal, the arc structure, so that's gonna be, we're gonna estimate the cost. This is, the area may cost a little more, so, but we don't, we don't know yet. I have identified three companies over there, local company that can help us to build the arc, and we're trying to keep it local, of course, and, but right now, while we have the design, I wanna provide that design to them, and they, they wanna give us an estimation. The intersection improvements, as I mentioned, that Mr. Guerra is working on design, we don't know yet, but that's gonna be part of the, if we put an arc there, at the same time, we need to input the sidewalks in the intersection. So we're working together to, to find a solution, to get it done with a lower cost. Mr. Guerra is, is doing himself the design, so we saving some money with him, and, and I'm working in my side too, so we're trying to save some money on the design of the intersection. And the, the new business recruitment is placed there, I, as I mentioned, it's costing us twenty thousand dollars, but I mean, the benefit is gonna be a lot, a lot more, because we're gonna bring in more sales tax, not only businesses into downtown, but also city wide, citywide. But let me give you an example of this, by, by, I had a training about this software, and I told the, the trainer of this company, how about if we can bring Costco into Nogales? So he told me, okay, let's look at it. So he looked into Tucson, the existing Coscos in Tucson area, and basically, we have the customer base to actually bring Costco in Nogales. So why not? We can do that. Just imagine the sales tax, and, and sometimes, some of those companies, they compete each other, so we, we, we had a calculation, and we got the data comparing Walmart, comparing Costco, and other, other businesses in Nogales, there is no actual competition, what they do. So even if we bring Costco, there is no taking away from existing businesses, and then giving it to Costco, those kind of businesses. those kind of businesses. So, so we are actually not killing another business to bring something new, something new. Of course, Costco is an example that there's something I can be working in the future. And as you know, many times people asking about, why is taking so, so much time to, to make downtown redevelopment? And I wanted to show you this because I work in other places in downtown Tempe and Mesa and also in Somerton. So we know for sure it takes time. But, but it can get done, can get done if we work together. And it's not like every couple years, sorry, four years, but it's gonna continue working together to get it done. So this, like here's a change never happens at the pace we think it should. It happens over years of people joining together, strategizing, sharing, and pulling all the levers they possibly can. And eventually, suddenly, something good will come out. From my own experience downtown Tempe, it wasn't like it is now when I was in college, ESU. It takes time, but eventually it gets done. When I was there, people told us La Real is impossible. Never is gonna work. People can go from Mesa, use Mesa now, all the way to downtown Phoenix to, to watch the games, baseball or basketball, all the way to North Phoenix now. So things can be done, but it takes time. So when people ask me, why is taking too long for six months? Because we're working behind the scenes and building the infrastructure, building the foundation for the downtown redevelopment. Not only downtown, but also citywide. And I wanted to also show you this because it's very critical downtown. Creativity cannot be really regulated, but it can be encouraged. A lot of times, people go black and white with the sun in orderance. Okay, no, flat plane used permit, no, you cannot do that. You cannot do that. But we use creativity, I think we can get it done. Not elevating buildings, you know, five, 10 feet, but finding solutions, how to, how we can, how can we redevelop downtown without worrying too much about it's gonna be flooded. We can find solutions. So it depends on the individual strange of a place in the wheel of the leadership. We as a leaders, we can actually get it done to bring the change. Not only downtown, but also Nogales. The goal is to establish a cultural infrastructure, not only in the way we think, but also the infrastructure downtown and citywide. We have issues on water lines, on new subdivisions because we don't have a fire pressure. All those things, they are together. We have to invest on that. So that's my presentation. I was gonna, I wanted to give you an update, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Go ahead, Mr. Donia.
Mr. Tapia, thank you for your presentation. I, I have a few questions. A few meetings, a few months ago, we had a meeting about the rezoning of the flood zone. Am I correct? How FEMA sort of remapped or some flood areas? But correct me if I'm wrong, or you, Mr. Guerra, also. What, from Nelson on to Court Street, didn't FEMA sort of reassign the, that area? And they eased up on, a little bit on their requirements on, as far as like the 50%? Like you said here for the bathrooms, for, for the Karen Park. And I understand that, that it's $65,000, $65,000. And all the electrical and stuff like that doesn't count against those $65,000. But wasn't, didn't FEMA re, reassign that area, that particular area on Morley?
Mr. Donia, they did, but what they did, they eliminated the floodway. Not the flat plane. Floodway means that you cannot view nothing. A flat plane you can, as long as you meet the requirements. They're still there, but they eliminated the floodway. They went along Morley Avenue, right? Yeah, but that's not, the flat plane is still there. As I show you on the, on the flat plane use permit, on the map that we got. That one. This one, as you can see that color, the, the flat plane is still there, but the floodway is not.
So let, let me, okay, so we're talking about revitalizing downtown. And I, I see a few issues that, that may, with that, I think that we're not really paying attention. So obviously, that's a big one right there. But so let's say, I, I noticed that there was a little, there's a restaurant on, on Morley, a brand new restaurant, new business. And I knew for a fact that they had issues with the grease trap. A simple thing, a grease trap. Because you, there's nowhere, there's nowhere to go. I mean, if you go down there and you hit the, the IY and stuff like that, right?
Yes.
So I don't, I don't, that's just my take. I don't, we're talking about having a new vision and then stuff like that. So I, I believe that Morley Avenue slowly will turn into a more of a, a hospitality type of, you know, type of street where we're gonna bring in sports bars or restaurants and stuff like that. So I have friends that have restaurants here and I, and I know some investors that don't quite understand the, the whole 50% of the value and stuff like that. But one of them did ask me, well, what's gonna happen if I wanna put a restaurant on the other side of Morley? Can, can, is that gonna be an issue with Mr. Guerra with, with, with the grease traps and stuff like that? It's a real simple thing, but it, it gets them into, into, it kind of stops everything. So from what I'm seeing is that they would have to leave the, the bottom part pretty much not anything and do everything on the second floor, right? Because, because of, of the laws, of the FEMA flood zone laws. Am I, am I correct? And we're not looking, Mr. Tapia, also at, at parking issues. I, I, I can tell you right now that if we bring in two businesses that have nightlife type of things, we don't have enough parking anywhere, not even on the back and front. So what are, what are you doing to sort of see that in the future? Because we can talk about revitalizing Morley and everything, but you know, if, if we don't see the little details, because I, I really don't think we're gonna go, ever go back to the old, like the 50, 60s and 70s and 80s that we had all these stores, the brick and mortar stores that were selling clothes and stuff like that. I don't think that's not gonna happen anymore. But I do believe, and I do have a vision for the city, for the city where Morley can, can make a comeback. It's just gonna be a, a, a little bit different. But I, I think there are little details, Mr. Tapia, that we're not, we're not seeing.
Yeah, you're right, because parking is gonna be an issue. And it happened in, in every place in downtowns. Especially in downtown, like Nogales was no parking. But eventually, through the new designs, parking instructions can happen on the east side of Nelson Street. There's some areas can be redeveloped as parking. Those buildings may not be, I was talking to Gregory Corey. He owns a building on the Nelson Street and, and E Street. And I was, we're talking about the same discussion about parking. And he was telling me, well, those buildings are not being used right now in the right way. Can we do something about it? Yeah, but it's gonna take a little strategic. And as part of that, the, the overlay that we designing for downtown area allows us to be more flexible, the things that we can do there. Yeah, you're right, parking is gonna be an issue. The grease trap for restaurants. We helped the Eagles Cafe because existing trap that they have, it was too small for that kind of menu. The menu that they use kind of heavy. You know, Mexican food has a lot of grease. So we helped them to find a solution. So we found over the floor grease trap more modern. The technology has changed. We don't use the same grease traps, you know, 40 years ago or 50 years ago, like it was there. Now the new ones are more efficient and it can be on, on tap. And they, they clean the, the grease separated and then go on the clean, it goes into the sewer. And then they, they strike the grease and put them away. So it's there. We hoping to find one of those new grease traps. And it's working fine. So we can do the same thing, helping to find solution for the new restaurants.
One of the issues, Mr. Tapia, that, that I was, I was just driving the other way the other day on, on, on Morley. And I said, well, what if we had a bunch of restaurants? So there's really no place like, I'll give you an example. Some of the local restaurants have a company called Tucson Talo. That's where they go and, and they, they throw the, the, their oil that they, they need to get rid of, that you need to deposit them somewhere. So there's no, there's no area anywhere where anyone could, could have that, that service anywhere. Where will we have the, the, the trash bins? There's, so I understand, Mr. Tapia, that vision is big, but we can't sort of figure it out, the, what's, what would happen if we came into that big boom on that street? What will we do? What, have you seen, have you sort of forecasted that, Mr. Tapia?
Yeah, we went through in downtown Tempe, was the same thing. Where, where do we find the, the fashion coaches now? They're there, we don't see them. We hide them behind, behind the businesses. But yeah, you're right, those are challenges that when we get new business or existing business, we're gonna have to design what you see now. We have to redesign the, the area in different ways. It's not gonna be, what you see right now there, we have to find the solutions, especially along Nelson Street. Nelson Street is kind of under, underutilized buildings that it can be actually bring more activity there. And they're big buildings, but they're, they're not being used as, you know, the potential that they have. The building between East Street and Court Street, those buildings are empty right now. Those are kind of things that we're gonna be, you know, find solutions. But you're right, there's challenges. That's why on my, on my first slide that I show you there, there are challenges, but also opportunities. I mean, we, we have, we have to continue, you know, pushing for the changes.
Go ahead, Mr. Doyle. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Tapia. You know, I'd like to be enlightened a little with the difference between the old system of traps and the new one. It was interesting what you said. I think before you had some kind of Mexican restaurant, you needed the big 1,500 gallon trap. These restaurants are downtown or in that area, are they using the 1,500 gallon traps? And can you tell me on the newer ones, how many gallons are those that?
Yeah, the new ones, it's a requirement by the treatment department. I think Mr. Barzanas can, can mention a little more. The Eagles Cafe, they have a, a requirement. I think it was like a 1,300 gallons trap.
But the gallon capacity is?
Yeah, they met the requirement, yes.
But, but you also mentioned that those now separate the grease.
Yes.
And so that, or they purify or filter it, I guess.
Yes, a filter, yes.
And, and then you can drop that grease into the sewer system?
Yeah, and the way they work, because we found those on the company that we recommended to Mr. Jaime Guerra. So they're, they're not that big, but they're big enough to, the grease comes in into one compartment and then it filters into another compartment, just cleaning. And in between those two compartments is trapping the grass, the grease.
So you really don't need somebody to come and extract it?
Well, yes, because you, you, yeah, you're trapping it and you're cleaning and then put them in a, in a containment so they take it away.
Okay.
And some, some companies are using for recycle.
Well, because you're, like compared to what the 1,500 gallon, what's left over isn't that much, really.
It depends on the menu, depends on the work or the, or the activity.
Yeah, but, but it seems like they could find a way of carting it away where, you know, instead of bringing a, one of those vehicles or something to try to extract it, they might be, is that, can they do that with those, with those modern?
Yeah, was, Mr. Guerra mentioned to me that they will have a, they have a person that comes in and then takes it away, because some companies, they recycle the, the grease.
It's a cleaner product.
Yeah, they actually create a fuel.
Okay.
So some companies, they, they actually buy that.
Yeah, they can burn it or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Tapia, on, on the restaurants that you're remodeling, how long do you think it's gonna take to, to do the remodeling? And are you gonna have something else available for the people that do the shopping there, like a porta potty or?
Yeah, we, yeah, Mr. Guerra and I were talking about that because we need to create an option. How long it's gonna take? The permit should be issued probably in the next couple of weeks. Then we can look for contractor. And we don't know exactly how long, but we need to work with Parks and Rec, Mr. Oropeza, to create some kind of bathrooms, temporary bathrooms to allow people to use, like we use in the special events, something like that. It can be a month, I don't know, but hopefully it's faster. It depends the contractor and how, how much it's gonna be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Tapia. I think it was a very informational presentation and hopefully we move on forward. Thank you. Next, we, we go to financial monthly report, Ms. Jing. May, May 2024 financial monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. You have the May financial report in front of you. For May, figuring out percentage wise, we should be about 91.66% of our budget. So if you look at table A, which is our general fund, for revenues, we have collected $29,424,845, which is 110%. And for expenditures, it's $29,107,83, which is 74%. You'll also see on the same table A is our shared revenue. And we have collected $10,313,337, which was 94% of the budget. If you move on to table B, this is our sales tax. For May, we collected $1,329,223. We are still $606,202 above this point last year. You will notice that May of last year looks quite high. But you have to remember, if you look back at April of last year, they had a very low month. It all depends on when the money hits our bank. So I just wanted to point that out. So if we move on to table C, that is the general fund breakdown of the departments, where we're still tracking to see if they're on, if they're below or above their, their budgets. If you move on to table D, table D is our HERF and our overweight. For HERF, we have collected $2,537,039, which is 99% of the budget. And overweight fees, we collected $398,522, which is 159% of what we had budgeted. For expenditures, for HERF, we've have expended $4,576,956, which is 107% of the budget. And for overweight, it was $443,942, which is 51% of the budget. If you move now on to table E, this is our sewer. Sewer has collected $3,324,026, which is 111% of the budget. And we have expended out $1,903,929, which is 79% of the budget. If you move on now to table F, this is our water. Water has collected $3,828,535, which is 110% of the budget and expended out $5,590,710, which is 93% of the budget. The final table, table G, is our sanitation. We have collected $2,722,397, which is 97%, and expended out $2,550,615, which is 69%. Is there any questions on that part of the report? Is there any questions on that part of the report?
Go ahead, Mr. Berna.
Jean, on on water, sewer and and sanitation. So these numbers, are they sustainable like for another year where we can keep our heads above water as far as? Because we haven't finished or we haven't received our our water rate study yet. So can you sort of tell us what what are you seeing? How fast does Mayor and Council have to take action on this so that we can actually stay above the problems that we're having right now? Yeah, above water.
So if you'll notice in the budget that we just approved tonight that we're becoming very conservative in those three accounts when it comes to capital. Mr. Barsonas and I have worked very close. This next year, keeping the rates the way they are, we will probably keep our noses above water. I have been working with Will Dan, the company who's doing the utility rate study, and he has just sent back a couple more questions for me to answer. He's just trying to make sure that he gets everything plugged in the right way so that he can present to you all a very accurate rate study. So he is working on that. I'm kind of hoping in the next few months that it's completely wrapped up and he can come and do the presentation for you. So we are working, you know, side by side with him. Mr. Barsonas has presented about a 10-year capital wish list request that will hopefully bring us back up to where we need to be in the city.
Councilwoman Doyle.
Yes, I I hear you say that I guess they're doing a rate study already?
Yes, for the utilities.
How much is that costing, rate study?
It was approximately $25,000. That was approved by Council in November or December. It was late fall that the Council approved the rate study, the utility rate study.
But but yet you say that that'll probably put us in a real accurate, realistic numbers.
Yes.
But yet we haven't done any kind of an audit in those departments. So how can they justify getting the right numbers when you don't do an audit?
Well, every year, part of the city audit is those three departments. That is part of what you've done.
I know, but I'm talking about going a little deeper. I think Mrs. Montiel mentioned, Councilwoman Montiel mentioned something about more like a forensic audit in those departments that that needs to be done to make sure that 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 everything is on the up and up, that money isn't being mismanaged or in any way not following the normal process. And the only way to know is by doing a deep audit.
So if the Council chooses that they want to have a forensic audit done of the enterprise funds, we just have to, you know, you need to talk to Mr. Bermudas, and we can get it taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be done by an outside source, so we won't do a forensic audit ourselves.
Right, so so that it'll line up with with the other report.
Absolutely.
That way we get real numbers whether they're the same or whether there's a difference. At least they'll they'll find out if there is a problem or not. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mayor and Council, I think we should be cautious about using the term forensic audit. That implies that there's suspected fraud or illegal activity. That's when you would use a forensic audit. If you wanted to do a audit of the enterprise fund, then you would do an audit of the enterprise fund, but should be careful about using the term forensic audit because it does imply that there's some illegal or illicit activity going on with the money.
Well, it's just the reason I mention that is because up there in the counterparts, which is the same community, basically both governments serve the same people. Everybody thought everything was real fine, and and they kept ignoring the red flags in in different audits. And I just want to make sure now we're, I think we're held to a different standard because now it has been brought to the community's attention. So, you know, I think we need to go from there. And then, of course, we can talk about about the audit and whatnot, but I just want to make sure that the people in our community feel that we're doing our responsibility.
Understood. But again, I think there's a difference between a specific audit of one or more of the enterprise funds as opposed to sort of a citywide audit, which touches on the various funds or departments, versus a forensic audit, which which basically means you have to suspect that there is some fraud or other illicit activity going on. And I'm not sure that I'm hearing that. I think you have valid concerns about the proper use of the money, but negligence, if if that occurs, isn't grounds for a forensic audit. Forensic audit is a result from intentional, basically illegal acts or suspected illegal acts. I'm just just sort of cautioning on the use of the terminology so that there's no misunderstanding by the public or the media that you're suspecting that there's some illegal activity going on.
Well, thank you for that, but maybe we can speak or you can give us a little more counsel on that to maybe let's just say if some of the concerns I have kind of line up with what you're saying, instead of just speaking out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Go ahead, Mr. Berna.
Mr. Bermudas, you and I have had countless of conversations in the past when it comes to the to our enterprise funds. And I I believe that this issue stems from going back almost from 2015 when there was a rate study done back then. And maybe Councilwoman Lopez might remember. But it was it was it was implemented in 2016, and then, for some reason, it was postponed 16, 17, and 18. We didn't raise the the water rate or or any rate back till 2019. And then 2020, we didn't do it. And then 21, 22, 22, and here we are. And we haven't adjusted the rates. So right now, we're spending more money than what we're actually collecting. That's is that one of the issues that we have, Mr. Bermudas? I don't, and to clarify, I don't suspect that monies are being misappropriated. I just think that it is an issue that we've been dragging along since 2015, and we need to address it now, as soon as we get that 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 rate study in.
Is that a question or a statement?
Well, it's a question, a statement, Mr. Bermudas. It's just that we we've discussed this countless of times. And in maybe the optics to to some council members, it may look like something is not correct. But i- in a sense, Mr. Barsonas, two, two, it's almost been what, two budget ago, Mr. Barsonas raised the red flag, and he said it like just over the top, you know, and and we didn't really pick up on it. And so we're we're gonna run out of money. And it's and we're not gonna run out of money, not because it's being misappropriated. We just, we're not collecting the right amount of money. Am I correct, Mr. Bermudas?
Correct. I can guarantee you 100% there's no misappropriation of funds. What's happening is that we're probably getting about 10 breaks a day. Everything has gone up, especially after COVID. There's no, not enough money coming in, and there's more money coming out, which is a reason why we're in the situation that we're in. Hopefully, when we do get this rate study, you guys approve whatever is in the best interest of the community, and and we get back on our feet with this with this with this fund.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jean.
Just the final little bit on this, our business licenses. We currently have 3,247 active ones in May. We had no cancellations or suspensions of active of licenses in May. We increased 23 new ones throughout the month. And there's still 45 businesses that are in the hopper, either waiting for inspections or somewhere along the line to open up their businesses with new business licenses here in O'Gallus. So we do see growth on our businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we discuss items number six. A discussion in action removing Mr. Carlos Ibarra as a member of the Appeals Commission for his disrespectful conduct towards city officials. I put this on the agenda. We had our attorney send him a letter. There was no response, Mr. Jean. We had no response.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, so I move to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
You want to discuss it? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
First of all, for the sake of full transparency, Carlos Ibarra is my brother-in-law. But I don't believe there is any conflict here. It's not a paid position. There's no financial gain for either him or I. I do not have any employee, any city employee related to me working for the city at this time. So I do not believe there is a conflict in me taking part in any discussion or any subsequent vote.
I agree with that.
This does appear to be a personal attack from the mayor. So maybe the conflict might be with the mayor. And it stems from a letter that was drawn up. Now I hear it's from legal, but it's signed by the mayor, and there is really no basis. The mayor has no authority to issue a letter such as this requesting anybody to immediately resign from any position as far as the committees go because they're appointed, and these people are actually just volunteers. So I have great concern with that. There is no charter provision. There is nothing in the personnel manual that allows for removing of a committee member. And there is for appointment. But this is a political appointment, and now we're getting into the area of where we're dealing with political appointments. I do not condone the behavior in any way, shape, or form, and I don't see eye to eye with my brother-in-law most of the time. So I'm not saying I agree with him. It's just the fact of the matter is that we're doing this, taking it this a little bit too far. I don't think, from what is stated in this letter, it questions his ability to remain impartial. He's not an employee. It's a political appointment, and it becomes a slippery slope. And what kind of message are we sending to all the appointees of any committee? If you disagree with the mayor, council, or any employee, you will be removed. So I have a concern with that. As the city attorney, I think you should have looked at those aspects first and realized that you don't work for the mayor, you work for mayor and council as a body. So that I take great issue with that. The incident in question was not even a city-sponsored event. The other issues are Facebook posts. Are we now gonna be considered the Facebook police and are tasked with limiting free speech? I don't think we should go down that road. They do have their own people that monitor Facebook, and they put you in Facebook jail if you do something that is not in accordance with their bylaws or stuff like that. Now, has the subject's behavior affected his duties on the appeal board? From the people I've talked to, nobody said anything about any of his cases that he sat upon other than being in good favor. He's there to protect the interests of the city and the employees, not political bodies and not any anybody else. Once again, do we have the authority to remove somebody without having a charter provision? Maybe we need to work on policies and do that. But I urge my colleagues to really think about this because if we if we do this, we're setting a precedence that any any new administration that comes in is gonna be wanting to remove anybody that's been appointed to a committee.
Mayor, if I can respond. First of all, I think that any any member of the council has the a right or the ability to ask a member of a border commission to resign for whatever reason. The the person, the the person on the border commission doesn't have to resign because the the board and commission members serve at the pleasure of the council. So the council appoints the members of the Board of Appeals, and they serve at the pleasure of the 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 council. So the decision here is for the council to decide for whatever reason, no reason, inability to do the job, bringing discredit, whatever the reason is, that's up to the council to decide. But but because the the folks on these boards of commission serve at your at your pleasure, you have the ability to remove them for any reason or no reason. I would, you know, qualify that by saying you just don't have a bad reason and a legal reason. But other than that, it's really up to the council. But again, any one of the council members, if there was somebody who you wanted to resign from a border commission and you wanted me to help you sort of draft a letter, I'd be happy to do it. Because, but again, it's not binding on the person. It's not binding on the city. It's simply a request to to that person that I can provide sort of assistance in drafting an email or or a letter type request. So that's that's where that issue's at.
I agree with what you're saying, but we are mayor, council, form of government. So if he would have requested from mayor and council the authority to maybe draft this letter or to go through you, that'd be a different thing. But he took it upon himself as possibly trying to be a strong mayor, form of government, which it's been many years since that happened. And I brought this up to the initial person that came in your representation when we decided to take on your law firm as far as getting familiar with our charter. Show me in the charter where it says that we have that authority to remove people. There's nothing there. Maybe that's something we gotta look at first and then come back and try to remove people if we want, depending on what actions they have or have not done. The the actions delineated in this letter are petty. We all get criticized on Facebook as a public forum. People talk about us behind our back anytime. So now we're opening up a can of worms, for lack of a better term, if we decide to go this route. I'm not holding anything personal against you or any member here. I just want to make sure that we all are aware that we're subject to criticism simply because we sit up here. And when we start picking apart our appointees or, God forbid, an employee because they don't agree 100% with us, we're running into issues. Maybe I'm looking at it too broadly, but that's what it appears to me. And I just wanted to make sure that my colleagues were aware of this.
Go ahead, before, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you. I I guess, you know, from what I hear legal and from the concerns of our Councilman Gradias, maybe we need to just get more facts on our and think with a maybe cooler head. In other words, get more information. Maybe we need to table this item for for the maybe the next meeting where we can. Because I don't think we all have to. We're not as informed maybe as you are. And and that's concerning that I don't want to just jump. And and so that maybe we can also define the lines of what's proper and improper. And that way, at least we know why we're doing what we're doing. So I I would I would kind of go along with a motion to maybe table this till the next, until we meet again.
I got no problem with that, Mr. Jean.
So just from the procedural standpoint, a a procedural motion made in second, it takes precedent over the motion that was made
Okay, yes, you're right.
to remove the person. So the council would then vote on the procedural motion to table. Or you want to table it to a date certain, continue to a date certain, or just table it indefinitely?
Bring it back the next month.
Just to get more information and so that we can make a better decision. There's no, there's no need to be hasty right now.
Right, so I'm at, so do you want to just, you want to set, continue it till the August meeting or the September meeting? Sort of you, you made the motion. So choose, I I recommend that you, when you're gonna continue something, to continue to a date certain rather than just table it because then it's just out there without.
Well, I'll let the ideas go ahead and 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 do it now. He's the one that's.
Go ahead, Mr. Montiel.
Yeah, on on that note, you know, we are public officials, and and we are subject to criticism and subject to make certain allegations that are unfunded, unfounded, if you will. And so, you know, we just saw that tonight. So I I do agree that we maybe have some more legal advice on it and talk a little bit more about it before we make this decision. Because again, we're public officials, and we do face this topic criticism. I've been facing it for some time. And so I think none of us here are are not facing that. That's what we got into when we were voted as public officials.
Okay, Mr. Gradias.
If I could amend it to bring it back at the next council meeting, which would be our August meeting, I think that will solve the issue. And, and the other issue I would want to bring up is make sure that we explore whether the commission itself has a procedure in place to remove one of their members, because that would be very interesting to know. Because I know some committees do, so we can get that information before. This letter was not in our packet, but I took it upon myself to ask questions, and I got a copy of the letter, both from my brother-in-law and internally, but I had to do my research. But we're not getting all the information we need to make this decision, so that was my concern. Thank you.
I'd like to second his, his motion to amend.
Okay, I got no problem. You know, Mr. Gradias, I, after everything, you know, you know, I, no need to give it any explanations, but, you know, it was brought up on me on, on what happened, and, you know, that's when I talked to legal and about making the letter. But after the fact, I even found out that he was your brother-in-law. I got, never, never knew. So no hard feelings. I got no problem with tableening. And let's all look into it and, and find the right solution. So I got no problem. All right? So with that said, move to table for the August meeting. All in favor? All right? All opposed? Right? So then the discussion item will be override by the table, right? All right, thank you. Now, item number seven, executive session. Move to, go into executive session, the, the discussion of item, they need to read them all. Item one and two on this, on executive session. All in favor? Opposed? Move to executive session.
We resume from executive session to number eight. Discussion item, discussion item and possible action on adopting a council goals and objectives for city manager. As we, we do have a evaluation form and we will be presenting it in future date and hopefully November, correct? All right. Thank you.
That was the form that the council had previously approved, the evaluation form.
Thank you, sir. Then we go to orders, number nine. A consideration possible action of order 2024-07-025, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, to transfer ownership of Nogales Police Department Sideline 2012 Kawasaki Motorcycle to the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Motion approved. Being consideration possible action of order 2024-07-026, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, approving the implementation understanding concerning the One Arizona Distribution of Waterway Settlement Funds Agreement. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. All against? Motion passes. Number C, consideration possible action of order 2024-07-027, an order with the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, approving a sub-grantee agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for a stone guarding grant in the amount of $979,184 in reimbursement, overtime and mileage. All in favor? Again, motion passes. Go down to resolutions. Number one, consideration possible action, resolution R. 2024-07-003, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, destinating the chief fiscal officers for official submitting the fiscal year 2025 expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Otters General. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Do I have council's report? Sorry, Mr. Gómez.
I attended the Fourth of July spectacular, which I had a great time and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle.
Again, the Fourth of July was really, everything was smooth. It looked like there was close to 10,000 people there and it was really packed and everybody stayed late. I mean, they closed, there was still, well, not everybody, but I would say there was still at least 1,500 people when they were closing. Oh, there was about 1,500 people in clusters there just enjoying the music till it finished and some of them left at that time when they stopped the music, but I think some of the city workers had to come and tell us to leave because there was still, there was still a good 500 people clustered around, just, just I guess enjoying the evening. Looked more like groups of friends and maybe families that were still kids playing around and so it was, I thought it was, you know, to me a successful event is when you see the people having a good time, especially in that amount of numbers. So it was a great event.
Thank you. Lopez.
Yeah, we're still working for the Fiesta Spat on December 14th and we are also working on a fundraiser for Ime Becas that's going to be on October. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Gradis.
Ditto on the Fourth of July event, but I want to take a time to do a special recognition to the library that needs some Miami to come over to a mural that's being painted by high school students under the direction of Mr. Grijalba from the Rio Rico High School and it focuses on the cross-border culture. It's right as you come in the front door, I invite you all to show up and take a look at this, it's amazing, it's coming out really good. It's going to be there for two weeks, take advantage. It's something awesome as you see it progress, so take advantage of that. The other thing is I spoke to the chief, Jimenez, had a contact with one of the rookie officers, he was very professional and courteous and he's on FTO, so they're learning the right way and I want to commend you for that. Thank you.
Ms. Montiel.
I just want to thank Parks and Rec and under the direction of David Oropesa, he did a great job organizing it and another successful year with all the employees helping out and the fire department did the beer stand and I think it was very successful too. And thank you for the people of Nogales because that's who makes it successful, the residents. Thank you, residents.
By your side.
Yeah, again, ditto on the, on the Fourth of July, the event was successful and the parade was good also. The only thing that we need for next year is get, get more flags and things to give out because we, you know, we were halfway the, the parade, halfway the street and we ran out of them. So everything went fine.
Thank you. Basically, I had a, I was a part of a Growing Waters smart workshop up in Nogales Sonora with SILA and, and Nogales Sonora, working on how to hopefully stop these floods coming into both Nogaleses. Also participated with the Arizona Sonora Region Task Force meetings, which was IBWC, SILA, which is IBWC Mexico, local governments and both cities, also looking at how, how to work with Mexico and its, you know, storage lines and all that. Attended the Aniversario de la Independencia, which was Fourth of July and June 13th, done with Councilwoman Award. Women Award. The Museo de Arte Nogales Sonora was a nice event. Then attended the Naleo Conference in Las Vegas, which was a good event. Hopefully, we get some contacts from there. Did a luncheon with Cox Communication with Port Authorities, and basically, that meeting was very good, and looking at how the better our communications of internet here around the city. Then I had a meeting here at La Americana with Unidos USA, also on trying to work on housing in the city. Unidos USA is supporting the city and supporting the community, and hopefully looking into doing a thousand houses around the community. We reached to private landowners and some developers on getting everybody on, also some federal and government support, you know, Chicano por la Causa, USDA, and other outfits, even the universities were involved. You know, we had a breakfast with the councils with some intentions of how to support, you know, the migrant thing that we're going through right now. A lot of people don't see it, but there is migrants being deported back to Mexico, and Mexico does have some issues with, with the way they, you know, the amount that we're having with that new law limiting it to 2,500 a day. It makes it hard. So besides that, I want to, you know, hats off to the whole council and staff, Parks and Rec, PD, Mr. Bermost, you know, finance, everybody on the Fourth of July, you know, really hurt to miss it, but I heard it, you know, I saw pictures and everything, and it was something that I really miss not being here, but it was a great, great event. I saw that. So thank you to everybody for stepping in, Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you for stepping in on the podium for me, you know, but hopefully it'll be the last one I miss. But with that said, any future agenda items? Go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
One, a report.
Turn on your mic, sir. Thank you.
A report and discussion on the status of the fire department and firemen, not the personnel thing, just.
Okay.
And number two, report and discussion of the corrective action plan on the control deficiencies found by the recent audit. It's a report and discussion.
Okay.
Just in case we have a question.
Yep. Mr. Bermost, if you have any questions, clarify with Mr. Doyle, to make sure we, we're on the same page of what he needs. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else have any future agenda items? I just want to announce, you know, tomorrow, today I've got 11 teams coming into town. Unfortunately, one Idaho that is not staying here, they're staying in Tucson, Airbnb, but we got 10 staying in town. Tomorrow, there's a parade at 3 o'clock. We're just going to do from the Marley Port all the way to the courthouse. Don't want the kids to walk too much, because we start opening ceremony at Pleasure Field at 4:00 PM, and the first game at 6:00 PM. I gave you guys a schedule of the games. And disappointingly, but as a city, we cannot, we cannot say no. This is the first year that we as a host would not have our own team. The host team for this year has always been, the ruling from Winning Sports, when we took this tournament on, has always been, the host team will be the winning district team. And unfortunately, this year, Douglas won the district, so they're going to be the host team. Our team had the opportunity to go to state and be the Arizona representatives, but we lost on the championship. So unfortunately, you know, but let's show the visitors that, you know, that, you know, we respect everybody coming. We welcome everybody that's coming. We got Hawaii, Alaska, Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Colorado, Nevada. Those two are brand-new returners. We got Northern Cal, Southern Cal, the Arizona team, and the hosting. Basically, we start tomorrow, then go on to the championship game on the 25th. You know, right now, all games are at, except tomorrow. Tomorrow, it's 6 and 9. The rest of the weekdays are 5 and 8 in the afternoon. Saturday, they're going to be at 9:00 AM and at noon. If anything changes with Mother Nature, then we might be playing in the morning. But let's go show some support. I wish the whole community and the international puts it out there, and, you know, let's go show the support that we, oh, yeah, we'll have a good snack shack over there. So let's enjoy it and play ball and have fun. With this said, I move to you. Anything else? Move to adjourn this meeting? All in favor? All opposed? Media adjourn.